Good evening. About our agendas. I'd like to call to order this committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, February 12th. That is now 6:01 PM. Please have a roll call. Sorry, Kate.
Coort. Esri. Harper. Hartke. James. Jay. Kibler. Kurtz. Langenheim. Maxwell. McGuire. Michaels. Mitchell. Petrie. Quisenberry. Richards. Rosales.
Here.
Schrader. Schwartz. Alex. That's it. Kurtz.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for approval of the minutes, committee of the whole minutes, January 31st, 13, and Mr. Mitchell.
Second.
And second by Mr. James. Any corrections or changes on those minutes?
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like approval of the agenda and addenda. May I have Mr. Rosales? I have a first. Mr. James, again, I have a second. He's moving fast tonight. Any changes to the agenda? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public participation is next. I'm going to stand by our rules. Each participant has five minutes to speak to their issue, and we will have a one-hour time limit on public participation. And I will call first to the podium, Mr. Bill Brown. I won't start the timer until you sit down, Bill.
I'll be brief. My name's Bill Brown. I work, I live at 304 West Nevada Street in Urbana. Tonight, I'm speaking for Champagne County American Civil Liberties Union of Champagne County Chapter. Our chapter currently has about 630 households in Champagne County. We became aware a few months ago of the sheriff's purchase of an unmanned aerial vehicle, also known as a drone. It has surveillance capabilities. From reports, the plane weighs approximately four pounds, operates quietly with an electric motor, lithium batteries, and is capable of staying aloft for up to 45 minutes, includes a high-resolution video camera capable of live feeds to someone on the ground. It's our understanding that the sheriff first became interested in obtaining a drone after seeing one used in a search-and-rescue operation. The department apparently has flown a number of test flights over the past few years, but the drone has been damaged several times, and last we know of, it's currently inoperable and probably not going to be repaired. But the sheriff has indicated he would be interested in using similar equipment in the future. The primary concern at ACLU is that deployment of this type of surveillance equipment can lead to warrantless searches and invasion of rights provided by the Fourth Amendment. Additionally, we are concerned that potential use of drones for the purpose of mass surveillance, such as during outdoor rallies or demonstrations, would have a chilling effect on the freedom to assemble guaranteed by the First Amendment, clearly related to free speech issues. We're asking the county board to develop a written use policy that would clearly define what constitutes appropriate use of the drone technology. I provide a one-page document and tie out ACLU recommendations on the use of drones that highlights some of the important considerations in developing such a policy. We believe use by law enforcement should be restricted to basically two cases. One, where there are specific grounds to believe that the drones will collect evidence relating to a specific instance of criminal wrongdoing, or if the drone will intrude upon reasonable expectations of privacy, where the government has obtained a warrant based on probable cause. Where there's a, or two, where there's a geographically confined, time-limited emergency situation in which particular individuals' lives are at risk, such as for search and rescue. We think these are reasonable uses, and we ask that you'd have public meetings to discuss how drones would be used and how privacy will be respected. The people of Champagne County have a right to know that our government isn't going to be spying on us. We believe that it's important to institute such policies, not only for the current board, but to send a message to future boards, that as this technology becomes more sophisticated and less expensive, they need to make a conscious decision to change the policy if they intend to use the technology in new ways. I've also included some contact information and links to additional resources on the back of the handout. If you didn't get a handout, let me know. I have a few extras. One of these links is to the U of I's policy on security cameras. Their policy provides examples of limitations on image access and retention and many other protections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Well, I have a name here, a very recognizable name. A former esteemed chair of this county board has asked to participate in public participation, Mr. Pius Wyble. Would you please step to the microphone? Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments that are based on the nursing home study session of last month. First of all, Mr. Rosales had talked about the intent was that we hired MPA or some other entity to come in and train, train the staff, and then, once they're trained, they would leave. I disagree with that interpretation. Certainly, there was discussion about hiring, actually, there was a specific discussion about hiring, I think, an administrator from Knox County to come down here to train the staff on a contractual basis. And somebody actually talked to that person. It was not me. I don't know if it was a county board member or a member of the staff. However, ultimately, the board decided to hire MPA. I think the reasons were because we didn't really know what the problems were. As we found out, just more than just training the staff to administer how to better run a nursing home. So I think that it was not a mandate of the, of the board to do that. I mean, the board obviously decided to hire an MPA to help the nursing home get onto a better financial standing and to keep it there, and I think they're still doing that today. Second, Mr. Ralph Langenheim, you stated that you did not vote on, the administrator in this case was Andrew Buffenbarg, and that's absolutely true, because you're not at that meeting where that took place. On June 19th, the county board voted to, actually, on the, to vote on the MPA contract resolution number 6595. Part of that was Exhibit A compensation package for Andrew Buffenbarg as administrator. That vote passed 21-4. You were not there, nor was Mr. Knott. Also, the $307,000 construction bond payment that they made was not approved by a specific resolution by the county board. However, the county board has, in the, in the three years of spell, has voted, voted to approve that as far as the budgetary process. And finally, I certainly agree that the, the bylaws of the nursing home should be rewritten. It's been a number of years since they were written, and they were also written at a time when, obviously, it was a very stressful situation. So I would strongly suggest that either the county board, the nursing home board directors rewrite those bylaws to really fit what we're doing now. Thank you.
All right. Next is Diana Visick.
My name is Diana Visick. I live at 608 West Pennsylvania Avenue in Urbana, and I'm chair of the Champagne County Libertarian Party. I'm here tonight to talk about developing a policy for drone use in Champagne County. Drones have become a hot topic internationally, nationally, and locally. Our national government is using drones in warfare and to assassinate U.S. citizens and others on foreign soil. Although drones are more accurate than bombs, innocent individuals in the vicinity of the target are often maimed or killed. Unfortunately, the National Defense Authorization Act allows our president to order the murder of U.S. citizens on the mere suspicion of being terrorists. Although I'm unaware of drones being used for assassination on U.S. soil, the legal grounds are in place. On February 8th, the mayor of San Francisco announced that due to community concerns, he would be ending their drone program and returning their two $82,000 drones to the manufacturer. Locally, Brian Dolinar has described his investigations into drones purchased by the Champagne County sheriff in a recent issue of The Private Eye, The Public Eye, I think it is. Residents of the Garden Hills neighborhood feel that something in the sky is watching them, and Sheriff Walsh will be reporting on his department's drones at the end of this meeting. Because drones are the perfect vehicle for surveillance cameras and other sensors, they, at a minimum, present a threat to privacy. Although a search warrant is required for normal search operations, the Illinois statutes don't include the word drone, and law enforcement has exploited this ambiguity. While there are extensive rules governing where and when cameras can be used, they don't explicitly apply to drones. According to Bill Brown of the Champagne County ACLU, who spoke to you a couple times ago, a couple people ago, the Illinois ACLU is working on a bill to remedy this shortcoming, but it's not clear when the legislature will get around to dealing with it. Some uses of drones are quite reasonable. For example, a child lost in a cornfield might be found more quickly by a drone. Drones would be useful in surveying geological features or plant distribution. And playing with hobby drones is probably a lot of fun. As the price of drones has been coming down, they've begun appearing in catalogs. But any use of drones could present a threat to privacy. For example, if I'm sunbathing behind a tall privacy fence or in the middle of my 40-acre property, I have a reasonable expectation of privacy. A neighbor's teenager taking his hobby drone for a spin prevents the quiet enjoyment of my property. And as the residents of Garden Hills will tell you, having a drone in your airspace feels threatening. Individuals gathering for a peaceful protest would probably feel threatened by a drone monitoring their activities. They would have no way of knowing whose drone it was and would probably feel that their peaceful political expression could lead to later trouble. Do we want our citizens to feel like they're living in a police state? We therefore need to identify which uses of drones are acceptable and which are not, and we need to state what images may be saved and for how long. The ACLU has been working on recommendations for drone use, and the U of I and other institutions have developed policies for security cameras. We can use these resources to develop a policy for Champagne County in addition to whatever legislation the state may pass at some time in the future. In my opinion, the best way to develop a policy is for the county board to appoint a five-to-seven-member task force under the purview of the policy committee. The task force should include members of the community with expertise or interest in this area so that the burden of developing a policy doesn't fall completely on county board members. I hereby request that the March 12th agenda for the Committee of the Whole include a discussion about appointing such a task force. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Dwayne Northrup.
I won't take up too much of your time. I know you've got a full agenda tonight. I just want to stop by for two reasons. One was to introduce myself to the new board members for anybody who hasn't met me before, or at least in person. I'm Dwayne Northrup. I'm the Champagne County coroner, so you may end up working with me or contacting me if you have any questions or, or concerns about anything that's going on in my office. So I just want to come by and say hi. And secondly, I just wanted to stop by and check. I received a message last month that someone on the board had asked about monthly reports from my office, and I wanted to stop by and say, I used to turn in a monthly report that we would work on back, I think we stopped in '09. To be honest with you, I didn't think anybody really read it or paid attention to it, and it's something that doesn't exist in my office. It's something we create each month. If that's something you want, I'm more than happy to do it for you. I would just like some direction on what you'd like to know about or what specifically you'd like me to put in the report, and I'd be happy to do it. Like I said, it's, it is extra work that either myself or someone in my office will work on, but if there's something in particular you'd like to know on a monthly basis, I'd be happy to create it and get it to you on a monthly basis. Just let me know. You can reach me through an email, or you can call my office. You can get me anytime. Like I said, if there's something in particular you'd like to know, let me know, and I'll surely get it to you. Other than that, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right. Brian Dolinar? I'm sorry, have I pronounced that correctly, hopefully?
My name is Brian Dolinar. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana. I'm here to address the drone issue tonight. I'm also a member of Champagne Urbana Citizens for Peace and Justice. I'm passing around a one-page memo I retrieved from a FOIA request in regards to the drone. I'm afraid I only made a dozen copies, so feel free to share if you can. I've been told, in regards to the sheriff, the county board has virtually no control of the sheriff's operations, but except for finances. When it comes to finances, the county board does have something to say about the activities of the sheriff, and so I think this is one place where the county board, and specifically the policy committee, can intervene in regards to this drone issue. I'm passing around this email exchange between Sheriff Dan Walsh and Staff Attorney Susan McGrath. And what has happened here is that the sheriff, in inquiring about a drone here in March 2008, is first checking with the staff attorney to make sure that he would not have to pass this by the county board, that he would not have to make this drone public. So what he's doing here is see if he, if he can offer a no-bid contract to the supplier, RP Services, from Texas. And what McGrath tells him in return is that if things are between $5,000 and $20,000, they don't have to get written quotes, take bids, this doesn't have to go public. Or if the case is that the piece of equipment, the drone here, has been offered to another unit of government, there's no need for any approval. So I think we see here the sheriff sort of, what I would say, secretly trying to acquire this drone here in 2008, and I think the board has the right and responsibility here to enact its powers and make sure that finances are public, above ground, and reported. So I want to have a question as to what restrictions this, you know, are, you know, what determines the ordinance mentioned here that states that things between $5,000 and $20,000 have to be reported? Now that number's $30,000, anything under $30,000 has to be reported. Is this determined by the state? Is this determined locally? My question is, what degree can the board change these figures, lower these figures? Drones are becoming more common, they're becoming more inexpensive, and more sophisticated. So as the prices are coming down, I think it's important that the county board consider this benchmark here of now $30,000. Drones are increasingly on the rise. It was just reported that the use of a drone within U.S. borders for the first time upon a U.S. citizen has been used in the hunt for Christopher Dorner, the LAPD, ex-LAPD officer who's gone rogue with accusations of misconduct in the LAPD, and is, I understand, currently cornered tonight. Secondly, there was a drone, a helicopter-style drone spotted over West Oakland within the last week or two. Recently, Sheriff Dart in Cook County has expressed interest in inquiring a drone, so these things aren't so far away as we might expect. They're becoming increasingly common, and there's a growing concern for privacy. There's also a move to establish ordinances within cities prohibiting drones. And recently, Charlottesville, Virginia, college town, home to the University of Virginia, founded, of course, by Thomas Jefferson. Charlottesville has passed a drone ordinance, establishing in Charlottesville a no-drone zone, as it's being called, as well in Seattle, Washington. They've established an ordinance there prohibiting drones. There's one being considered nearby in Fort Wayne, Indiana. We're happy to provide examples of language to go in such ordinance to be passed here in Champagne County and think there is good reason to pass such an ordinance. We'd like to work with board members in crafting such language and addressing this issue. Thank you so much. Any questions, perhaps?
Eric, there are no questions at public participation. Thank you, sir. Mr. (inaudible). Oops, sorry. Time's up. Sorry about that. Excuse me for a moment. Take care of that. You hit it right on the button. Linda Turnbull.
My name is Linda Turnbull, and I live at 1202 West Bradley in Champagne. My concerns about this drone, the sheriff says his is broken. Well, who do these, who do these drones belong to that's flying around in Garden Hills? Is there some more people he's connected with, or are there some more people using them? I feel that a lot of times when people get these little private toys, they can do things they have no business doing with them, and we do need an ordinance passed on the guidelines of how they're being used, what they're being used for, how long can they be used? Are they allowed to break citizen rights, to stalk, to follow, racial profiling? All kind of things come in mind here. There are a lot of illegal things going on and corruption in law, government, and we need to look into the people that's using these drones, what they're doing with them, how long they're using them, what they're doing. I mean, you don't know what they're doing, and I've seen these drones many a times. Now, if the sheriff's is broken, who these other ones belong to? So somebody's lying here, and I'm not going to say who is, but I'm saying to you is that something needs to be done. People as citizens have rights, certain things you should not be allowed to do, and I just want to bring that to your attention, that people, family members, being on film and watched and followed, I mean, what do they stop? What do they end comes to? And I just appreciate if you guys look into this, and please get something done about it. You guys have a nice evening.
Is there any other public participation at this time? Okay, I'm going to close public participation. Thank you very much. Communications. Are there any communications from the board? I have one. Yesterday, at the invitation of Congressman Rodney Davis, I met with him in his office in Champagne. He wishes to build a relationship and a bridge to understand the concerns and issues of Champagne County and Champagne County Board. We spent a half hour going over some of those issues. He wanted to open a dialogue that included both sides of the aisle and to help in addressing these issues. We discussed Willet Airport, the nursing home, the Manhattan Aquifer, and other important issues relevant to the county board. I felt it was a good opening to future discussions and plan on regular meetings with him. Thank you. What's that? Yes? Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
I just want to remind you all that the county board photo is at 6:30 next Thursday evening before the county board meeting, and if any of you will be unable to be here, we will reschedule it, so please let us know. Otherwise, we hope to see you all here for the two-year session photo. Thanks.
Also, Mr. Kibler and Mr. Quisenberry have asked to be excused from this meeting this evening. All right, let's move on to our agenda. Policy, personnel appointments. Mr. Quisenberry isn't here. Mr. Alex, would you please handle that for us?
I will do my best.
Thank you. I know it'll be excellent.
Okay, the first item under policy personnel and appointments, our appointments and reappointments. We have the Lincoln Legacy Committee from March 1st, 2013, to February 29th. Mr. Chair, who is your nominee?
Ms. Heather Tucker is the incumbent and is for reappointment. Is there any discussion?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Ms. Michaels. Is there any discussion? Ms. Petrie.
It's more an information question. As I was doing research to educate myself on this committee, I find no budget or record of their donations or what they do with it. Is there a reason for that if we, as a county board, are appointing somebody to this committee?
I have no information on having a budget. Do they have a budget that I know of? This is a liaison to this committee. As far as I know, it's a voluntary committee that has no budget, and they, I don't know if they have money. Ms. Michaels? I'm sorry.
At one point, Mr. Langenheim, I believe, is on that committee, and I was on there at one point. Most of that runs through the Park District. This is that display in the county courthouse of Lincoln. Mrs. Weisaki chairs that, and Ms. Tucker's been a member of that for quite some time. They're very active in working with the people in Homer and some of the other people with the Park District, making sure they update things and work with the Lincoln Trails and Lincoln Legacy programs to make sure that what we have in our courthouse is current and up-to-date. I don't remember anything coming from the county per se, except for it is in the county courthouse. You're welcome.
Mr. Schroeder. I'm sorry, Mr. Lang, which one is it first?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ralph.
Are we in the ballgame now? They're financed by public contributions.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
I, I think there's a correction. It's the Forest Reserve District, I believe. And Ms. Petrie, I think if you look on their website, you probably can get the information you're, yes, Champagne County Forest Reserve.
Mr. Rosales.
Is there any financial disclosure to the public, since it is public donations, in what they're spending this money on? So it's on their website?
Should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments about this appointment? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Thank you. For the Community Action Board term ending December 31st, 2015, Mr. Kurtz, who is your nominee?
My nominee is Cedric Jones.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Ms. Coward. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? As approved, the Sangamon Drummer Drainage District, we have information that Mr. Steve Day has resigned. That's for the board's information only. For the, to fill the unexpired term ending 8/31 of 2015, Mr. Kurtz, who is your appointee?
I'd like to move Mr. Stephen Hawthorne.
Seconded by Mr. Jay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Thank you. Moving on to the county clerk, we have the January 2013 report.
Moved to receiving place on file.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion of the report? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting places on file, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say no. Thank you. Moving on to the Regional Planning Commission, we have an ordinance, to amend ordinance number 635, establishing procedures for grant application, consideration, acceptance, and renewal and extension. And I'll let Ms. Bucy speak to this.
Mr. Moore is here as well, from the Regional Planning Commission. Effectively, the Regional Planning Commission receives literally hundreds of grants each year, applies for and receives hundreds of grants each year, and under the county board's grant process and procedure would require that all of these grants be brought to committee and county board to authorize the board chair to sign the grants. This request is and county board to authorize the board chair to sign the grants. This request is to eliminate the requirement that all of those grants come to the county board for approval and authorize the county board chair to sign off on grants that are designated and have to be signed off on by Champaign County Board. And in effect, the practice has been that the board chair has been signing all these grants for a number of years. It just came to light that these grants were not following the process that has been established by the county board for grants. You approve the Regional Planning Commission budget every year where they anticipate what grants will be received and utilized during the year. And if a grant is received that was not budgeted, then you receive the budget amendment documenting that grant, which also gives you the opportunity to approve or disapprove the acceptance of the grant. And beyond that, I'll let Mr. Moore speak to the reasons for this request.
Yeah, well, I think you covered it pretty well, but, you know, I'm not sure that everybody really understands sort of the entirety and complexity of our operation. But as Deb said, we probably write and submit 200 to 300 grants a year. We probably receive 50 to 125 every year, so we have a pretty good success rate. But since we are almost exclusively a grant-funded agency, it's kind of a necessary evil for us to constantly be writing grants, looking for new grant opportunities, and attracting new grants when we can and when we're approved to do that. And, you know, one of the things that I think has kind of changed for us is, is that in particular, in I'd say the last year or two, grant cycles are getting really, really tight. And, you know, we sometimes have two or three weeks to put a grant application together and submit it. And if we're awarded a grant, we sometimes have a period of weeks, two or three weeks, that we have to let a granting agency know that. And those are not infrequent occurrences. Those are things that are sort of a regular part of our life. I would also just point out that three county board members, including the chair, do sit on the Regional Planning Commission. I mean, the Regional Planning Commission is certainly aware of everything that we're doing. And I think, as Deb said, the process, if we attract a new grant or we get increased funding in a current grant, I mean, we do have to come back to the county board. And the county board has an opportunity to either approve a budget amendment to allow us to receive those funds or say no to that budget amendment. And so the process as it is, for our agency, given the volume of grants, the number of grants, and the dollar volume of those grants, has proven to be a bit cumbersome. And, you know, we're requesting your approval to amend the grant ordinance.
Ms. Schwartz.
Are any of these grants possibly with matching requirements?
If we apply for a grant that requires any funding from the county, which is very rare, in fact, I can't remember one in five and a half years that I've been here, then we do have to come to the county. And again, that becomes part of the budget process. Almost all these grants have matching requirements, but we've also become very entrepreneurial in terms of how we're able to do that. Just as an example, you know, we can take state grant funds and match federal grant funds. You can use state funds to match federal funds. So we may, and I'll give you an example with Head Start. Head Start for us is about a $6 million a year program. We, several years ago, were one of the few Head Start programs in the state that did this, but we wrote a grant through the Illinois State Board of Education, which provides us with $500,000 or $600,000 a year. And that makes up a big portion of the match for Head Start. So we are very conscious of the fact that we do not want to create any financial liabilities for the county. We certainly would never do that without coming to the county board first to have that discussion.
Ms. Petrie.
A little background information, if I might. And this may have been before your time. I didn't look up the date on the ordinance 635, so I don't know the timeline. But I need some history as to why was that paragraph added, and now it's being requested that be taken away. So what was the trigger mechanism for the paragraph originally?
I'm sorry, what paragraph are you referring to?
Page 10.
Paragraph seven.
It says that the RPC recommends that this following paragraph be added to the ordinance. And so it's just to accommodate what he is talking about, correct?
Correct. This is requesting that this language be added to the ordinance.
Okay.
And for a little background, the original ordinance was adopted and its intent was with regard to grants for general corporate fund offices primarily, because a general corporate fund official could apply for a grant that has ongoing implications and requirements for the county board.
Okay.
So that's why this grant process was originally created.
Okay. And then it is clear that if there's any, ever a time when there might be some county liability, that you will be coming to the county board in relationship to that particular grant application?
Yeah. And we would really have to do that because we couldn't certify that we can meet a match requirement if we're expecting money from the county board without coming and getting your authorization to do that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion. Mr. Esri, thank you. I apologize for that procedural error. Are there any additional questions or comments for Mr. Moore or Ms. Bucy? I have one. Is there a, does RPC keep a master list or something that could be made available to the board, at least as far as updates, in terms of what grants you've applied for and/or received?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have to because we have to track all the grants carefully.
It's difficult for me to come up with a reason why the county board needs to sign off on all these, given the number of them and the size of many of them. But it would be, I think, useful for the board to be aware of what we're out there applying for and what we're being successful at.
Yeah. And we'd be happy to do that. I mean, we could do a summary of that. It also would be reflected in the county budget because almost all of our funding is grant funding, so.
I think something like that that could go to finance or policy, we'll figure out who accepts it. But I think something like that on at least maybe a quarterly basis. We don't need to be a whole lot of work, but.
Sure, we can put a summary together.
Even though we're not seeing those, we still.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Mr. Harper.
Do you have any concern? Are you seeing the amount of grant funds available decreasing with the economic state of this wonderful state?
I think we're right at the beginning of that. To be honest with you, the, there were increased levels of grant funding, substantially increased through the federal stimulus package, which has now been several years ago. I frankly expected that we would see that decline maybe starting a year ago. And sort of germane to this discussion, part of what's happened is, is, you know, it was difficult, frankly, to spend that much stimulus money as quickly. And so some of it was left around. And I'll just give you an example, about a year ago, which really fits this situation. We run the weatherization assistance program, where we will weatherize a home for, it has to be a low-income home with a elderly, disabled, or infant resident in that home. About a year ago, actually, the state contacted us and said, you know, we've got about $800,000 that other agencies, some other agencies in the state can't use. And can you use it? It might have been January, but part of us using it is, we had to take it right away. We had to spend it by the end of March. So we were able to do that. And so in some respects, we've been able to maintain the higher levels for a while at the expense of other agencies in the state because we were prepared to act on those things. I do expect to see those declines, you know, begin this year. How steep they'll be, I think, as everybody knows, the federal budget is a best guess scenario for just about anybody what's going to happen. So, but we do expect to see grant funds decline. Ours, we've actually picked up about $10 million a year in grant funding over the last five years. I would expect that to decline at some point, but I've given up trying to predict when.
All right. Thank you. Motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, our next item is memorandum from Bucy regarding statute revisions with regard to the Developmental Disabilities Board, the primary issue being the size, as I understand it, being the size of the board.
Three to five.
Yeah, what, is this in the form of a, I'm sorry, is this in the form of a motion? I mean, is this in the form of a resolution?
Not yet. It would be after tonight.
Okay, so you're looking for board, you're looking for board, you're looking for board approval or board preference with regard to three or five, staying at three or five?
If the board wants five, they need to vote on a motion to approve five.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you heard that. The issue, as I understand it, is the state, the Developmental Disabilities Board currently has three members. The statute has relatively recently been changed to allow the county to increase that to five. The county does not have to increase it to five, but can increase it to five if we so desire. Mr. Tracy has a memo that's in the packet, and at issue is whether we wish to recommend to the full board that we increase the size of the Developmental Disabilities Board to five or not. Mr. Langenheim moves approval. Is there a second? Ms. Carter seconds it. We're now open for discussion. Ms. Petrie.
Yes, I am very supportive of the expansion of the board based on the 2009 changes to the state statute, whether it's the Disabilities Board or any board. I find three-member boards a little troublesome when it comes to decision-making because it could come down to the fact that one member is absent for whatever reason, so two people are making all the decisions. It does not solve the communication issues under the Open Meetings Act for members of the board to be able to have conversations with each other. That would have to be seven. We can't do seven. So for those two reasons, I really think it's important to expand the board to five members. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment? Mr. Kurtz?
We've been watching the Developmental Board work very well over the last number of years. I can't even tell how many years since Mr. Morrissey helped put that board together. I think it's been working well. I haven't heard of any serious problems that's come up. This was a unusual statute that was brought to bear over in 2009 and was really, in essence, done for Peoria County through a political request there. And as far as I know, no other county in the state has used that requirement to increase their boards. So I don't see any reason for changing what I think is a successful board at this time.
Mr. Mitchell, I think you were first.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that it hasn't been broken, so why try to fix something that hasn't broken? So we had discussion about boards and size of boards, three members or five members. And, you know, it was the conclusion that three-member boards working well, and I would oppose the motion.
Mr. Jay, did you have your hand up?
I've had some experience with a three-member board going to a five-member board, and quite frankly, it wasn't very pleasant. I echo what Mr. Mitchell says. If the wheel's not broken, I'm not sure why we're trying to fix it. There's, there can be an issue, whether it's a three-member, five-member, 10-member, or even a 22-member board, sometimes has a problem. So I, at this time, don't see the necessary reason to change it to five.
Thank you. Mr. Richards.
I, at the least, would like to see this deferred at the end of the discussion so we can chew it over for a while. I'm largely in agreement with Mr. Jay and Mr. Kurtz, imagine that. Because we, this is being done, basically, this is a proxy fight over some internal politics in the developmental disability community. Now, the DDB is fine with going to five, but the question is, are we ready for a fight over who these other two are going to be? Are we ready to look at the issue? Now, I contacted Peoria County, and they said the reason that they had this changed in 2009, and as Mr. Kurtz said, we can't find anybody else who changed it, was simply they were having quorum issues. They had three people, apparently two, half the time they couldn't get to go, so they increased it so they could meet quorum. It doesn't change the Open Meetings Act. I also think that the board seems to be working fine now. There is a position coming open if we think it needs more diversity this year. We can talk about that. I'm not necessarily opposed to five, but I don't think we should rubber stamp it, and I think we should at least chew it over. Now, if there's, the will of the board is not to do this right now and kill it, that's fine. But if we're going to move forward, I would like to see this deferred at the end of a discussion on this.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Ozalis?
I would have to concur with my colleagues around the table, and I would not be supporting this change tonight. So I would like to see it, that if it's not broken, why fix it? As we've seen what has happened with the county nursing home.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I did want to mention, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter.
I'd just like to know who on the board, since the name's not listed.
Ms. Bucy, do you have the list, the current appointments? We can look it up.
We currently have that in.
It's.
Well, don't.
If you want to give me a minute, I can look it up.
Yeah.
Ms. Petrie will do it. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, I've mentioned this once before, you know, and I don't think it would be too much hardship on, who's never you choose, you know, to put on a board that don't come here and introduce themselves. Now, the point is, how many of you all really know who on the board? This is embarrassing. It's really embarrassing. You supposed to have people representing you, but you don't even know. You wouldn't know the face if you see them out on the street.
I am certainly guilty that. We have a lot of boards, and I certainly do not know everybody on all the boards.
Well, at least they could come in, you know, and introduce themselves, say, I'm about something. I think that would be appropriate.
I think that'd be nice. I agree, Mr. Carter. Mr. Maxwell.
Thank you.
Thank you. It seems to me this request is probably a symptom of a problem within the development disabilities community. I'd like to see that group be given time to try to work these problems out amongst ourselves within that community. Thank you.
Mr. Langenheim, excuse me.
I moved acceptance of this because it required a vote, but I would like to ask Ms. Bucy, what were the arguments for it? I haven't heard a single argument for it.
There is a memo in your packet which Mr. Tracy prepared, just outlining the issues. I can't really tell you an argument for or.
I read that last Saturday, and it's already flooded my brain. Okay.
Ms. Petrie, do you have names for Mr. Carter?
I do have the information. The board members are not listed under that web page for that particular board, but I'm reading the minutes. And the members are Joy Still, Elaine Palencia, and Mike Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Mr. Richards.
I'd like to address Mr. Langenheim's question. The argument that has been put forward for expanding it, which, as I've said, I don't necessarily agree with, is that moving from three to five would allow more diversity, I assume of opinion, on the board. And people pushing for this are saying that the three current members of the board line up together too much. That is the argument that has been made in favor of changing it to five.
Thank you.
Are there additional comments or questions? I just had one. I believe there's an exemption in the, or a special case in the Open Meetings Act for five-member boards, which actually does allow two members of a five-member board to talk. I think it's specific, a specific exemption for five-member boards. Yeah. And I agree with Ms. Petrie's comments with regard to the difficulties of three-member boards, but they can work well depending on who's on them. I see no further discussion. Mr. Richards, would you care to make a motion?
There's a motion.
You indicated that you were interested in moving to defer.
I would move to defer this to next month.
Second.
It was moved and moved by Mr. Richards, and I think Mr. Hartke got in first on the second. Is there discussion on the motion to ask Ms. Bucy, are you aware of any time pressure to do this? Hearing, she has said no. Mr. Carter?
I've asked it.
If there's no additional discussion on the motion to defer, all in favor of deferring this until next committee of the whole, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to need to show hands on that. In favor of deferral? We've got 11 opposed.
We've got 11 opposed. We have nine. Deferrals have it. We'll see this again next month. Thank you. Moving on, we have the annual report from the Board of Review. May I have a motion to accept it and place it on file? Mr. Mitchell, a second by Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. James. Is there discussion on this report? I think we should be happy with the performance of the Board of Review, I guess is all that I have to say. If there's no discussion or questions, all those in favor of accepting this and placing it on file, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Thank you. Onto the sheriff. We have a resolution regarding the Sheriff's Merit Commission. May I have a motion? Mr. Esri, second. Mr. Kurtz. Ms. Bucy, would you like to take this one?
Basically, the county board adopted a resolution establishing policies for the Sheriff's Merit Commission, or rules for the Sheriff's Merit Commission. And since the adoption of that resolution, number 506, state law has changed and clearly gives the authority for the Merit Commission to establish its own rules. So this resolution is in conflict with the current statutory authority. The state's attorney has prepared this and requested that resolution number 506 be rescinded to eliminate that conflict.
Is there any discussion on this matter? Ms. Petrie.
Just a quick information question. When was that changed? Ms. Bucy?
I don't know.
You don't know? Thank you.
Are there additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor sending us to the full board with a recommendation for approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. I'm sorry, was there no? Okay. I don't need to know who, I just need to know that there was one. Takes it off consent. Okay, onto Section G, the county administrator. We have Administrative Services Monthly Report. Motion to accept and place it on file. Mr. James, second. Anybody? Mr. Esri. Take it away, Deb.
It's there for your information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It's basically just a statistical report from our division for this past month.
All in favor of accepting that and placing it on file, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. That is approved. We have renewal of a one-year term of the consulting agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services, our benefits broker, moved by Mr. Kurtz. Second by Mr. Lengenheim, I'm sorry, Ms. Burksen. Ms. Bucy?
We entered, after a competitive search two years ago in 2011, selected Gallagher Benefit Services to provide health insurance and employee benefits, broker services to the county. The agreement was for an initial two-year term with three one-year annual renewal options. This is the first one-year renewal option that I am bringing to you this evening and requesting your approval. Basically, through this two-year period, Gallagher has been a very good partner for us to work with. In that timeframe, we developed the Labor Management Health Insurance Committee, and John Malakowski from Gallagher, who is here this evening, has been instrumental in helping develop a base of information and understanding for the members of that committee as we work towards particularly the health insurance issues and policy renewals each year, which we have had great success, again, with Gallagher's assistance. In fiscal '12, our health insurance costs went up 0.34%, and in fiscal '13, we anticipate it will be a 5.17% increase, which is really unheard of in today's environment in terms of health insurance cost increases. Gallagher, John Malakowski, does an excellent job of providing a very complete and thorough numbers analysis of the statistics that we received from Health Alliance, which we previously had great difficulty understanding. We have a much better ability to understand those renewal quotes now and have been able, because of our understanding, to negotiate with Health Alliance to a renewal that makes more sense for our census and for our population. We are also hoping to work towards developing a recommendation for moving to self-funded for our health insurance for the county. And maintaining consistency with keeping the same broker, working with our Health Insurance Committee, is very important and will be beneficial as we continue on that journey. So for all of those reasons, I'm recommending that the one-year renewal be approved. The fee increase does go from $40,000 to $50,000. I can tell you that two years ago, when we selected Gallagher, we were quite surprised of the fee that was given to us. I believe this contract ended up being a bit more work and a bit more demanding than perhaps they had originally thought it would be, but they have never balked at responding to our requests and providing all the services that are required and needed under the terms of the contract. So while this is a 25% increase going from $40,000 to $50,000, they were frozen for the first two years of the contract. This is the first increase. It is still 37, or $27,000 less than what we paid for these same services in fiscal year 2010 with the prior broker, which is 35% less than we had been paying previously before we went into this agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services. I don't expect you'll see another 25% increase next year if we decide to come back with another one-year renewal, but at this time, it seemed to me that it was a reasonable request for Gallagher to bring to the county board. So with that, I would request your approval of this one-year extension.
Okay, the motion on the floor is for, to extend the contract for a year. I would point out, we also have the option of issuing an RFQ and going out to find somebody else if we are so inclined, and a substitute motion to that effect would be in order. Yeah, I think we already had a second. Are there any comments or questions? Ms. Schwartz.
I have no concerns about the need to have a consultant and so on. I appreciate the high-quality work. My concern is, of course, the 25% increase. And so I'm not sure if there was a direct statement by the consultant that they actually lost money on us. And I'm supposed to have here, so maybe we can suspend the rules and get that. The other question I have is usually, when you have a new relationship, it would take more work in the first year to get to know the client and so on, to establish, but those two years have already passed. So it would seem to me that the third year would be relatively less work in terms of setting up things. And so again, I'm not sure, it would be nice for anybody to increase fees by 25%, but I'm not sure that I understand the justifications. The third point is, if part of the reason is because the first two years were a two-year contract, and that's what got us the discount, I don't know if there is an option, since we're going to keep doing it, I think, annually, maybe we do have an option of instead of going for a one-year renewal to go two-year renewal and do $80,000. I'm not sure, I don't know if it was even considered. I just wanted to ask.
Ms. Bucy, do you want to speak to that? Or we could certainly hear from Representative Gallagher if he wants to speak. It's a committee, no, it's a committee meeting in this, here for a specific item of business on the agenda.
I'll just respond to two things. First of all, the volume of work, I understand there is some initial setup that gets done, but the volume of work does not change from year to year, regardless of familiarity. There is so much that has to be done in terms of negotiating with a provider, providing information, open enrollment. They're here to help with employee enrollment for new employees all throughout the year, so those issues don't really change. And the contract, the original contract terms specifically states that the contract is for an initial two-year term with three one-year renewals to be done one year at a time. So it would be a change to the original contract.
Could you do the questions one at a time?
Yeah, the question was-
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself for those of us who, those who have not met you yet?
Okay, my name's John Malakowski. I'm with Gallagher Benefit Services, and my office is in Decatur.
While we've got you here, could you give like a one-second sentence summary of what you, how you see what you do for the county?
Well, our role with the county is that of a benefits consultant. I think that the county made a decision a couple of years ago to put an RFQ out for broker services, and broker services basically are having an individual, a company, as a consultant, to look at overall benefits, to negotiate with the carrier or carriers that you have, or you have your benefits with. We make recommendations to the county through the Labor Management Committee and ultimately to the county board on who to be the carriers are. Over the course of the two years that we've been able to negotiate renewals, at this point, our direct negotiations have resulted in several hundred thousand dollars of lower renewals with the current carrier. With the work of the Labor Management Committee, we believe that the number is actually closer to about $1 million that the county has saved over the course of these last two years with the plan designs that we've been able to work with the Labor Management Committee on. The, what, the agreement that we entered into, we're doing basically the same work that we were doing two years ago. We're looking now at moving into a, moving and looking at adding consulting work in the wellness area, and that's frankly, one of the areas that we think that we can further execute savings within your plan, but that wellness consulting will involve some additional manpower from our offices in Itasca that we have not tapped into before, and that's one of the reasons for the increase in the fees that we're asking for.
Ms. Schwartz, did you have additional questions? The floor is yours.
So, just to make sure I understand, so we are renewing the contract for one more year, but you're saying it's somewhat different scope of work contracts?
Well-
Is that the reason, or do you feel that you lost, the $40,000 was too low and that was not appropriate to comp-
We're adding, we're adding additional work and additional scope of services that we're bringing into the county for this next year.
So that's in the contract, or is it, the contract is not specific? The contract the county has with you, does it specify the scope of work, so would it not say we have additional scope?
We have, we have the scope of services in your, in your packet.
So that scope you're saying is broader than what we had two years ago, correct? I'm just, I don't know what we had two years ago, so I'm asking.
The scope of services involves wellness work that we did, we were not asked to work on before.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Ms. Burksen.
I was on the committee. The reason his recompense came down so low is because it had been a percentage, and we made it a number, and we made it a lone number, and he took it, and that was very nice. But it was, was a very low number, and much less than we had been paying. And he's taken the time to explain everything, there's somebody from every union, and he's taken the time to explain it so every single person understands it, and goes back to their union. All the unions are happy, and he's negotiated great numbers and great plans, and I mean, he's done an excellent job.
Okay, are there additional questions? Ms. Petrie.
First of all, thank you very much for all the work you've done for the county and for the taxpayers in turn. Now, I'm going to shift my hat to my fiscal responsibilities and get a clarification on your answer to Ms. Schwartz. Basically, we do not have to approve a new contract because what you're adding to do this next year was already in the previous contract. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So I'm still having a problem with a 25% increase, and Ms. Bucy only gave us two options, and she didn't give us a third option of negotiating that, that increase. And so I'm, we have a little window of time before this contract needs to be renewed, which I understand is the first of April. Is that accurate, Ms. Bucy? So I would like this to be deferred so we have a chance to see if there is any opportunity to negotiate that 25% increase because that is a tremendous jump. And then, looking down the line, as we come to the next renewal, are we going to be faced with another 25% increase? And so-
Is that a motion to defer, Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion to defer? Sorry, when would that be, when would you like to defer it to?
To next month because the deadlines are first of April.
To next COW. Does that motion to defer have a second? Mr. Carter seconds. Is there discussion on the motion to defer? Ms. Schwartz.
I'm not sure, so who is going to negotiate what? I mean, I would like, and I don't like the $50,000, just like you don't, but I'm not sure what, so we defer it, and meanwhile, what's going to happen? Somebody's going to have to say, "No, we don't want $50,000, give us another offer," or what do we have in mind, other than just deferring?
Yeah, absolutely.
What I have in mind, well, somebody got us, I'm assuming it's Ms. Bucy, to the point where, and/or Ms. Bucy and the committee, and so a clarification on my assumption, I may be wrong, but whatever entities or process got us to what we have here, I would like them to go back and see what are the windows of negotiation.
I believe Mr. Kurtz has and up next, and then I'll get to Ms. Bucy.
I've only seen good things come from this company. It saves us all money, saves our taxpayers money. They've frozen their increases for two years. If they had come back and given us a small increase last year, another increase this year. Now, the point being is that I don't see deferring this and negotiating or putting this company back to the wall for their effort. I think they need to be congratulated on the work they've done, and as Mr. Jay says, if it ain't broken, don't fix it.
Ms. Bucy, did you want to respond? Ms. Petrie?
Just that I negotiated with Mr. Malakowski with regard to this proposal this evening, and I believe it is the best, but if you defer it, I will be happy to meet with him and talk with him again. However, you will not leave us enough time to do anything other than continue under this contract, and if the terms are the same in March, I would hope that the board would be prepared to deal with it at that time. We would not have enough time to do a search and a selection and have someone onboard to work with us in time for us to work on what we have to work on in May, June, July, and August to get the health insurance ready for fiscal '14.
I would like to call a question on the motion to defer.
Mr. Lengenheim has moved to call a question on the motion to defer. Is there a second to calling the question? Mr. Esri, let me remind me what the majority required under our rules is for, for, no, to call a question. It's a simple majority or is it two-thirds? Simple majority.
Call the question.
What is it, to call the question? Two-thirds in Roberts, one majority for us, right? Does anybody know? Mr. Richards.
Our rules are majority for call the question.
Thank you. All in favor of calling the question? Aye, opposed? Okay, we now have, we will now move to a vote on Ms. Petrie's motion to defer. All in favor of, is there, all in favor of moving to defer this until the next COW meeting, please say aye. All those opposed, say no? No. Okay, the motion to defer fails. We're now back to the main motion, which is approving a one-year extension of the contract. Is there further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of extending the contract for a year, excuse me, recommending to the full board to extend the contract for a year, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say no? Thank you. That will be forwarded to the full board with a recommendation of approval. Next is review of the GIS consortium positions from the Job Content Evaluation Committee. Information is in the packet. And we are seeking recommendation to the full board, I'm sorry, we can do this directly in a committee, I'm not the policy chair. We're seeking, we're seeking a approval from the policy committee to approve the referral of these six GIS consortium positions to the Job Content Evaluation Committee. May I have a motion? Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Ms. Bucy, take it away.
As you will recall, we moved the GIS consortium from the Regional Planning Commission, serving as basically providing the lead agency or administrative oversight, to it becoming more standalone with the oversight being through the county, which means the positions are now subject to the county board's personnel policy, and these jobs have not been classified and evaluated under the county's salary administration- and evaluated under the county's salary administration system. So to be able to validate where these positions are classified and the job descriptions, both now and for the future, we need to have them go through the process of the county's job content evaluation. So this request is simply that you would approve us doing that and then bringing the information back to you. When it is completed, it might take two months instead of just one month because there are six positions.
Are there comments or questions for Ms. Bucy? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, we'll send those off. Uh, next item is recommendation regarding the supervision of the Champaign County Emergency Management Association, assigning responsibility for that to the sheriff. The recommendation is in the packet, may I have a motion to send that to the full board with recommendation for approval?
So move.
By Mr. Langenheim, seconded by Mr. Richards. Discussion. I'm sorry, Ms. Bucy, would you like to speak to this before I go to discussion? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Richards.
While ideally, we would have a freestanding emergency management agency, I think this makes a lot of sense, especially with the pretty rapid turnover that we've been having over at the EMA. Many of these functions and many of the incident command system procedures that the state of Illinois already uses are used at the sheriff's office. It's an agency that also participates in everything from counterterrorism to pandemic flu to storm response here in Champaign County. And so I agree that it is probably most efficient to put it under the sheriff's office right now, even though it takes a little bit of control away from the county board over this. This doesn't work certainly at any time, we can take that away and put that back under. But frankly, we don't have a lot of, except, except for me and Mr. Jay, we don't have a huge number of people on here who are keeping up to date with what's going on in the field, and I don't know how great our oversight has been in the first place of this agency. So I, I think this makes sense. If it doesn't work, we can change it.
Uh, Mr. Kurtz. Uh, yes, this is a two-member agency. Mr. Carlson has resigned or retired, if you want to call it that, and we will replace him, but he will work within the auspices of the sheriff, and I agree with Mr. Richards. How refreshing.
Um, are there additional comments? Mr. Jay.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we really, most of us don't know, thank goodness, because we haven't needed them, but we've got a pretty active EMA department, and I'm pretty proud of them. Uh, and I think, although I had some reluctance to this change, as I told my caucus, you know, when you look at, at directors, and if you've got a police officer or a fireman, firemen are always noted to be far more comforting and kind to people. But even with that, I did hear some really good things about this person that the sheriff had put in charge of it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Well, thank you for your comments, Fire Chief Jay. Uh, Ms. Petrie.
Uh, well, I don't think we should make this decision on personalities. I think we need to make this decision on structure, and when this goes under the sheriff, that's an elected office, and we no longer have any oversight whatsoever, and that does concern me. It also concerns me that out of a hundred and one counties in the state, there are only six listed in Ms. Bucy's memo, and really, only one of them, maybe two, are comparable in size to us. So that raises the question to me, if this is the greatest thing since sliced white bread, why isn't every county in the state taking this format and putting the EMA under their sheriff's department? And then the last part of my concern is, we're just being asked to do this without any presentation of organizational structure of how this is going to be fitting into the sheriff's organizational chart.
I asked this question some years ago, and I still don't see any improvement. If we have a major disaster, what kind of operation would we have to take care of the peoples that been killed or injured? I, I don't see any facility even to go if you have a bad storm in Champaign County.
I think Mr. Kurtz would like to speak to that.
Yes, thank you. Lloyd, there is a entire system set up for emergency management. Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, local, state, and federal are all involved in our agency here in Champaign County. We get together on a monthly basis, where, in fact, in April, we'll have a three-day drill with, a, a major drill with not only the entities from Champaign County, but from the state as well, as well as the National Guard will be involved on hazard control. And this, this is an ongoing work that we have, perhaps in the background, and you don't see it as often, but we have an extraordinary group of, of men and women who work towards the safety of our community.
Okay. Wait, I'm not through. I guess, that's fine, but you said, mm-hmm, but.
I didn't say it.
No, if, if you have a major disaster, why would you put the bodies?
That's not my worry.
Why would you put the bodies? I mean, if you had one that's really like, like a, a, a stage four hurricane coming in here.
I, I think, Mr. Carter, I think we, that's a question that should probably go to the Emergency Management Agency. They've presented here to us before, and we could certainly ask the sheriff to come. In fact, I think we should probably ask the sheriff to come to the full board meeting to discuss how this would fit in to his organization if we're willing to do that.
Yeah, but what, what I'm trying to ask, fine, they know what's happening, but what about the community? What, you, you got to let the community, you got to let the community know the safety where, where you can go for shelter even.
And, Mr. Carter, the planning is so complete that there's just one segment of the Emergency Operations Center, which is called Public Information Officers, and all they do in an emergency situation is provide communications to the public. All of this is extremely well-planned out, it's very well documented from the federal level to the state level to the local level of what will occur if and when an emergency should occur. And if you wanted to know more about it, you could certainly visit with our EMA, and they would be happy to share with you information about how all of that is very well defined. And, and we do exercises, all of the people who are policymakers and first responders participate in regular exercises every year to practice what we will do and how we will handle events if and when those emergencies occur.
Well, what, well, why haven't the members, I, I'm going to ask this question, how many other members know, you know? Now, when I was a kid, you could look on the buildings around here and, and see signs where you go with something. You don't see them signs anymore.
Mr. Carter, I'm going to, I understand what you're saying, but I'm going to ask you if you can wrap this up. I think this is something that I would encourage you to talk to the Emergency Management Agency about, and I think they can answer all your questions. I mean, it's their job.
Okay.
Mr. James?
Well, a couple of things. One, to Lloyd, is I know Mr. Keller used to give us some talks here, and I know, like Rantoul and other entities have a, a local person that handles the local areas, and a lot of that stuff, like Ms. Bucy said, they do on an annual or six-month basis. I know Public Health's very involved in it. I think as time goes on, we all get so set to it that we just don't watch it as closely. And as to Ms. Petrie's comments, I've always thought the MAA, EMA, works well with the police departments and fire departments, so I think it's a good blend that we're meshing at because in my mind, when something happens, usually the, the fire department and/or the police or the first responders, so being tied in together, I've always been a big proponent of, you know, why do we have so many buildings and so many offices when everybody overlaps each other? And if we can combine some of that and get a little bit bigger bang for our buck, and just think about it, if there's a big emergency and they got those red lights on, that guy's going to get there a lot faster.
Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Richards.
I guess I'd follow up with a couple of those. Lloyd, you're right, Lloyd's right, even, even under us, we've had problems with coordination. That's certainly been one of the problems with EMA, and that's probably something that we should work on. As far as if Urbana was taken out by a tornado or hurricane, we, there are procedures in place, certainly AEMA would be sending in morgue space, and I guess I would answer Patsy's question by saying, Ms. Bucy, my assumption is that even shifted under to the sheriff's office, the county board chairman would remain the chief executive officer, who would have to sign off on anything and ask for disaster help, and we would still be in charge of granting. Am I correct in that?
Uh, Mr. Kurtz. Uh, yeah, I had just had training by the sheriff's lieutenant, by John Carlson, over at the Elyse Building concerning my role as chief elected officer. They gave me the, the instructions on how that would be communicated if an emergency took place, and they would communicate with, in, in a policy group that would be stationed, we would be called in to the EMA offices, and we would work from a, a policy situation, the mayors and the local elected officials, but I would have to sign off on any major situation. They would come to me for that signature, for that authority.
Additional comments? Uh, Ms. Coward.
Yeah, who decided that maybe the sheriff should be the one to take over the EMA? Was it EMA or did the sheriff request it? And if, if it was the sheriff, how is he going to fit it in with his other daily responsibilities when we know that he's under staff and?
Ms. Bucy, do you want to speak to how we got here?
Um, when Mr. Carlson told me that he was leaving, I knew that we had to, I had to appoint an interim EMA coordinator because the county cannot be without an EMA coordinator at any time, and he left on January thirty-first. So I asked the sheriff to consider if he would be willing to accept that designation, at least in the interim period. Then he and Mr. Carlson and I had a meeting to talk about just structure and what lessons learned from the last year, because as you will remember, Bill Keller was the coordinator for probably about twenty years and operated, I would say, somewhat autonomously. He really didn't interact much. He, he was active in the community of, you know, getting volunteers for emergency management and things like that. And in our discussion, it became clear that the style of management and the knowledge base of the command staff in the sheriff's office are in a much better position to provide advice and consultation and oversight and supervision to EMA than I am. And currently, it's placed under me by the county personnel policy. So I asked the sheriff if he would give consideration to accepting this as a permanent responsibility, and it took him some time to, to think about it. It took him a few days to respond. He spoke with all of his command staff to determine whether or not this was something that they could work in their current command structure and provide that responsibility for EMA. It will remain its own department, the two employees will remain civilian employees, their job descriptions will not change. The only thing that will change is that they will be supervised by the delegated member of the sheriff's command staff rather than by the county administrator.
Mr. Carter.
I'll, I'll explain my situation a little better now. Champaign, Urbana, mostly, you got a large percentage of houses that build on slabs. Now, I know people live that fortunate enough to have a basement, fine, they have some shelter, but these people that don't have any kind of shelter, they go, I'm trying to figure out what direction we have for them that I haven't heard yet.
Yeah, again, all I can do is refer you to the Emergency Management Association because their planning is their job. I mean, they were, they were here a month ago, presenting to us that Champaign County has been designated a storm-ready community by the National Weather Service, and one assumes that that means that they have a pretty good plan as far as what to do if a storm hits. Now, I don't know the plan. I think the Emergency Management Association or Emergency Management Agency does. They're the ones you have to talk to.
This is what I'm trying, this is what I'm trying to bring to your attention.
Well, I appreciate.
We, we need, we need to do something about that.
I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing it to my attention, but the guy whose attention you need to bring it to is the Emergency Management Agency Director, who is, if we vote on this tonight, in the next board meeting, it's going to be the sheriff.
Now, I'm just bringing it to your attention, I think this is something we should look at. And like, like, where, where is the mold that you're going to put people in if you got a?
Again, I, I think you raise good questions, but, I mean, I see the coroner back there, and we'll talk to him after the meeting, I'm sure he can answer some questions too. But I'm going to have to move this discussion along because I don't think we can get into the details of our emergency management plan. If there's no further discussion, uh, Ms. Coward.
Okay, I'm going to go back to what Lloyd was saying. I remember a time that the EMA would come in and give a monthly report or a couple of monthly reports on, on what they were doing, what the organization was all about to keep the county board aware of what's going on, and we used to be sort of like the overseers, but now it's so that, as Lloyd like to say.
Right.
That the county board is not, not owning up to any of their responsibility. We have all these different agencies and stuff that the county board should be getting the information from that we don't get, get it from them. We, all our reports go online, and these departments are not coming in and keeping the county board aware of what's going on. I think like when something like this come up, the head of whatever department or organization that's requesting something from the county board should be responsible enough to come to us and, and discuss it with us.
Ms. Card, I, I agree, I'm going to ask you to talk to Ms. Burksen about that. Emergency Management Association reports under the Justice and Social Services Committee, and if we're not getting what we need, if we're not getting enough information as you would like, that's the, that's the way we ought to be doing it. Uh, are there any additional comments? I had a couple of comments. I was initially skeptical, skeptical about this for two reasons. One, I don't like the idea of permanently ceding, you know, county board authority. I was somewhat satisfied in that regard by the understanding that we can always change this in the future if we want. I see Patsy shaking her head, but I do not think she's correct. We, the county board can designate the Emergency Management Association, Emergency Management Agency Director at any time, right?
That's right.
So if we get, you know, Sheriff Arpaio in here, we could take it back. My other concern is that the, you know, in my experience, the one thing that law enforcement agencies are better at fighting than crime is each other, and I was concerned that, you know, the Emergency Management Agency, in case of a major disaster, has a coordinating role. They have to coordinate the activities of Urbana, Champaign, U of I, Champaign County, other agencies, fire departments. And my concern was that, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate that one of those agencies be essentially in charge. I have been assured, and we have effective a letter from the U of I Police Department to, to this effect, I've been assured that the Champaign and Urbana Departments are also supportive of this, therefore, I'm supportive of it as well. Ms. Burksen.
Microphone, please. If we are storm-ready and we have a plan, does the county have a copy of the plan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we, we can find out.
I believe it's on the website, but I can check on that for sure.
Okay, then we can all go check it.
Okay, I see incredulous stares around the table, but no hands up, so I think we're ready to vote on this. All in favor of recommending to the full board that we designate the sheriff as having responsibility for the Emergency Management Agency, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, we're going to need to show our hands on that one, too. All those in favor? Just one hand, chief. That passes. However, it will not go on consent. And our last item from the county administrator is a request for the Job Content Evaluation Committee recommendation for the circuit clerk, and I see Ms. Blakeman's been waiting patiently to address us. Would you like to speak to this?
Well, first, I'd just like to say good evening, and I'm Katie Blakeman, the new circuit clerk, and just want to introduce myself. circuit clerk, and just want to introduce myself to those of you who I've not yet met. This, I have worked with Ms. Bucie on this and have already gone to the Job Content Evaluation Committee, and it has passed that process. This is a position in my office that is the administrative secretary, and the administrative secretary retired in December, and at that time, of course, it was so helpful just two weeks after I took office. This position, I thought before posting it and filling the position, I wanted to evaluate what the person was doing and look at the, the job description and make sure that it was accurate. And in that process, I discovered that there were several responsibilities that we would like to add to that role, and in discussions with Ms. Bucie, we felt that that was appropriate to then go to the Job Content Evaluation Committee. There were two primary things that we would like to add to the responsibilities of this position. This position is administrative secretary, and in looking at every other department, most other departments, the state's attorney's office, the court administrator, the administrative services office, that position is an executive assistant. So there are two primary things that, part of it is bringing that position up to the level of other departments, but also in consultation with the outside auditor, we just, we, we felt that because there are only three non-bargaining positions in our office, one of those is the financial manager, one is the chief deputy, and one is this administrative secretary, we'd like to further break up the financial responsibilities. So that would include the, the payroll, preparation of payroll. So it is not appropriate for the financial manager to be doing that. She's the person that, that can write the checks, so we want to make sure that she's not writing herself a check, that she's not approving her own payroll. And that was happening in the past, and, well, yeah. So, and this, some, these are some recommendations from the outside auditor, partly because of, and many departments have received some recommendations like this. So we are adding some financial responsibilities, including the preparation of payroll or payroll backup, being a backup person. The chief deputy will be preparing payroll, but having this person as a backup in case he is out of town, or if I'm not out of town. Then also, there would be some purchasing responsibilities, so there, and we will be actually meeting with the outside auditor to have her assist us in breaking up those financial responsibilities among these three positions. The second thing that would require this to be reclassified is that we will be adding some supervisory responsibilities, which this position has not had in the past. So it would be directly supervising two clerical positions. So those are some, two, two of the primary reasons why there would be a change. This person also is the administrator, administrator for the annual drainage district elections, which is a very serious responsibility, and we would like to make sure that we are, if those of you don't realize, the drainage district elections are the only elections in the county that are not certified by the county clerk. They are administered by the circuit clerk's office. So we want to make sure that those elections are being administered with the same level of professionalism as any other election in the county. So we want to make sure that this person has that level of experience and can be trusted with that level of responsibility. They, this person also is responsible for the preparation of our weekly, monthly, quarterly, and annual statistical reporting to the state, and we have several state agencies that we report to. That would include the secretary of state's office with dispositions on traffic cases affecting people's driving records. So we want someone with a level of confidentiality and, and who can be trusted with that level of responsibility, and includes reporting to the Illinois State Police for FOID cards and things of that nature. So for those reasons, we submitted to the Job Content Evaluation Committee for this to be reclassified to executive assistant, and they recommended that it be passed to the county board. So I'm here if you have any questions.
I was trying to figure that out. This is coming back from the Job Content Evaluation Committee and requesting that the county board reclassify the position. So yes, we need a motion.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. McGuire jumped in first for the second. Sorry, Ralph. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have questions for Ms. Blakeman? I'll also point out that there's an item under the finance agenda, which is essentially the money aspects of this change. So please, if you have questions about that, now, I'll entertain those now, too, because it's all one issue. Ms. Bucie?
I also have one correction. If you look on page 43, under the, where the reclassification is recommended, it lists the minimum salary at 1802. It's actually 1633, which is spelled out on page 41. The range is spelled out on page 41. That's just a typo.
Mr. James.
Just a quick comment. When Katie was speaking about the outside auditor giving recommendations and that, I just wanted to point out, they are strictly recommendations, and they're required by law in their reports to do such. But when I've worked for the housing authority and another agency, there were offices that were quite small, and certain people had, you know, oversight over a lot of things that maybe it would have been nicer if there was a bigger staff, but in reality, with the economics of money and everything else, it wasn't feasible. So even though that's in their report, it just protects everybody, but you still, no matter who you put in whatever position, it's always good to have safeguards.
And with the 37-member staff, I think it does really make sense for us to have at least two people who, who can prepare payroll. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
In comparison, in comparison to the status of the retiree or the old position as to the new, when all the things that you stated are new responsibility that this position would have, correct?
Yes, the financial responsibilities and the supervisory responsibilities are, are new. Some of the statistical reporting is, was done by the previous person, but we are going to be adding additional responsibilities for statistical reporting to this person. And the drainage district elections, it's not entirely clear to me what the previous person was doing, but I want this person to be the point person for that, that responsibility.
And then the second question, who's actually executing all of those job responsibilities?
In the absence of the person?
In the absence of the person?
Well, fortunately for us, the person who retired was able to come back on a part-time basis to help us out with some of the things that we needed to do immediately, but the other responsibilities are broken up among my supervisors and, and some of the things I'm doing as well. So I'm, I've been working on payroll and, which I was happy to do. But, and our, our new chief deputy is taking on some of those responsibilities as well in the interim.
And then regarding the money, financial aspect was that you had three different levels that you stated there would, would be an adequate or equitable or fair amount to give. So the new amount that we're projecting to give to this young lady, it seems like we skipped a step from, from, I believe, F to G. What is it? From E to G? Was, is there an in-between step?
Let Deb talk to that. She's the one who matters.
Yes, yes, there is. And based on the responsibilities that were added, this position classification goes up two grades, which is also comparable to where other similar positions within the county structure that have these types of responsibilities are also placed. This position was previously in the lowest classification of county jobs, which, for the level of responsibilities that are assigned to it, is really not appropriate.
And the last question, what impact, budgetary impact would this have on an annual basis and other retirement plans and other things that go with the level of the position and the responsibilities of an executive assistant circuit clerk position?
I can speak to that. This is actually something we will be able to accomplish within our existing budget. We are working on ways to pay some of our salaries. We already have a salary line for the child support fund, and there are more than two people who are actually working on child support cases. And may, even if it's part-time or full-time, we are going to be paying part of those salaries out of that fund, which will offset general corporation, general corporate fund.
So other than the $4.20 increment or increase, you're not going to come back to the board asking for additional funding to cover this?
No, no, no. Not at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartke.
If I remembered what Deb said correctly, it's actually 1633, not 1802, so it's only $2.50 an hour. And my numbers say $90 a week.
And the prev, and the previous, the previous incumbent was, the person who retired was being paid $18.20 an hour.
Are there any other additional questions with regard to this item or the item under finance? So Ms. Blakeman doesn't have to come up here twice. Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the recommendation of the committee and forwarding it to the full board with a recommendation for approval, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, no. We will do so, and we'll take this up again under finance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was the EMA, was a vote on EMA? That was not unanimous, right? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Keep your vote on consent. Next item is the acceptance of the 2013 amended county board calendar of meetings, which will probably change again, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell moves approvals or second. Mr. Kurtz seconds. All in favor of accepting the calendar meetings as presented. Mr. Richards.
I would like to try once again to amend this calendar so that Cal meetings are at 6:30, not 6:00. I think that's a fair compromise. The Republican caucus seems to want it at 6:00. The Democratic caucus seems to want it at 7:00. The 6:00 p.m. time tonight caused havoc for the Democratic caucus. We have a rule that our caucuses are one hour before board meetings, and we simply did not have a quorum who could manage to show up at 5:00. Obviously, if this passes, we'll live, but we're going to have to restructure when we do our caucus meetings. So I would, I would like it to be considered that it be at 6:30. I think that's a fair compromise for everybody.
Motion to amend, I guess, by Mr. Richards and second by Ms. Petrie. I've got a, there's a parliamentary issue here. This isn't on, this isn't, the motion, resolution to change the meeting time isn't on the agenda. Is that, is it in order?
It's the calendar.
So we can, so we can amend the calendar. Okay, Mr., in that case, I guess I'll declare the motion in order. Mr. James, comments on the motion to amend?
Well, I guess we've done this, and, and I understand your dilemma there, but we used to meet before, and you guys had short meetings at caucus. We, caucus is fine, but a lot of times we meet and chew it over, and then we come in here and hear different things anyway. Mr. Richards, and I appreciate that you guys like to talk about that, but, you know, we extend our nights, and some of us have other commitments and things we need to do, and some of you with children, I used to hear it all the time because they were away from their children, couldn't make meetings, but yet they wanted more meetings. I think, in all honesty, that if, if your group feels that strongly about it, why couldn't you guys meet the night before or something like that and, and schedule your time to where it's not pushing everybody back for a little group that wants to meet and talk for an hour about some things. I could probably come in there and talk to you about and a half an hour and wrap it up for you. So that's my opinion on it. I don't want to see it change, but, and Patsy, I just would have to cut you right off when I had to, but we'll let that go with that.
We'll consider that a very honest opinion, Mr. James. Mr. McGuire.
Well, even though my name is James, too, I'm not as, you know, rough as Stan is, but I'm interested in the impact on the public and for the same, some of the same reasons he discussed, and the people that come to our meetings. The later that we start the county board meetings and do all these things and push this stuff back, the harder it is for the public to be here, participate, and talk about the issues that are, they feel are important. I think that's why we're here, as a public, and to get our business done. Meeting sometimes last night or 10 o'clock at night, and people don't see really what's happening and what their county board's doing. So if we're going to serve them, I think starting at an appropriate time is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Mr. Harper.
I, I agree completely with James and Fuzzy over there. My concerns would be, what I would ask would be for Deb and her staff that are here, I don't know how many nights no longer than I've been on this board, they might get tired seeing these walls around here. I mean, we got staff that's in here, I don't know how many meetings a month, and if you want to have a meeting, let's have it. I mean, I'll meet at noon if you want to meet at noon. Doesn't make any difference to me.
Mr. Richards.
Well, for many years, we had committee meetings at 7:00 p.m. We are not asking to push that back because I understand there are many people here who would prefer to get it over with as quickly as possible. But, and if my amendment gets voted down, we will have to talk about whether to do it another night or whether to do it at 30 minutes. But I think that this is a compromise that will work best for everybody.
Mr. Carter.
Well, I take the position that you would voted to do a job, and if it run over a little time, I think you should take that effort. Now, I'm a guy like this. What's a nerve I take, I put my heart in. And I try to do the best I can with my ability. And they taught me, understanding is the best thing in the world.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Are there any other comments with regard to Mr. Richards' motion to amend the calendar to set the start time of the Cal at 6:30? Seeing none. I'm sure we'll have to have a show of hands on this one, too, but we'll try it. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. Show of hands, please, in favor of 6:30. Somebody's better counter than I can chime in. I get nine. Opposed? I get 10. Mr. Richards' motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is accepting the calendar as presented. Are there any further discussions? If not, all in favor... Mr. Kurtz, did I count wrong?
I just want to make sure because, Rachel, you counted, you voted four?
Six.
For six? Oh, okay.
Are we satisfied?
Yes, thank you.
I can, I can't count much higher than 10, but I can count to 10.
I just didn't see, I didn't see. Deb was sort of in my way. I didn't see that. No, okay.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. No. Okay, and finally, we have a request to, we have, we have a request to, this was deferred from the committee of the whole in January. This is on page 50 of our packet. Ms. Bucie's going to discuss the typo.
There's a typo in the second line from the bottom where it says imply. It should say apply.
Mr. Hartke, would somebody like to move this change, first of all? Ms. Petrie moves a second by Ms. Schwartz. Mr. Hartke.
I originally made this motion and supported deferring it because of concerns about what happened at our original organizational meeting, but it was actually Mr. Kibler who reminded me that we can vote to suspend the rules at any time, and it was also Deb who reminded me that not always are those meetings that chaotic. So I'm not going to be supporting this rule, and, and I'd be willing to withdraw it if that's possible.
Are there additional comments? Seeing none, I'll make one. Mr. Kib, Mr. Hartke, as the person who was sitting in this chair during the organizational meeting, I would love to see the county board prepare a little better ahead of time than, than we were. Mr. Jay.
Well, after you say that, Mr. Chairman, I think that my concern was that that wasn't the place to be changing the rules to begin with. And I'm, I'm not arguing that the rules maybe doesn't, in fact, I think they probably do need addressed. But I don't think we ought to be doing it at the, at the organizational meeting. If we're going to do it, it ought to be prior to that.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Are there any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of changing this rule, signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. No. That one, I don't need a show of hands on. There is no policy, there are no policy chairs here, so there's no policy chairs report. Mr. Kurtz wants to say something.
Yes. We now move to, oh wait, designation for the, consent agenda.
Still working on it. Items for consent, A1, 2, 3, and 4. A1, 2, and 3, and 4, C1, G5. A1, 2, and 3, and 4, C1, G5, and H2. That concludes policy, and I would ask the chair if you would declare a brief recess.
Absolutely. Seven minute, ten minutes. Okay, ten-minute recess. Because the finance chair will be back to do finance, he needed a break. We'll all take a break, it's going to be a while yet.
I'm overworked. Underpaid and overworked, I must tell you. I can tell you that. Oh, man. These old bones, they can't sit too long in one spot. Got to stretch.
I've got, I've been talking to people in Fort Wayne, and they've got one over in Fort Wayne, so.
Okay, let's get back to work. Please.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Finance, and guess who? It's going to be Mr. Alex again.
Yeah, sorry, it's me again. First item of business under Finance is monthly reports from the Treasurer, who has, again, waited patiently to speak to us, so whatever you want to say, Dan.
Just quickly, my reports are available on my webpage, and I just wanted to add one little blurb about drainage districts that Katie brought up. Many of you may not know, there are sixty, at least sixty, a little bit more than, I think there are sixty-three drainage districts in Champaign County, and we're talking about over three million dollars in taxpayer money, so it is a big deal. So that's my only add, and that's the only thing I've got to talk about in the report. I'd be glad to answer any questions, of course.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive the Treasurer's report and place it on file? Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Hartke, are there any questions for the Treasurer? I sat there all this time, somebody's got to ask him something, Ms. Petrie.
Thank you, thank you.
And, this is maybe beyond your knowledge base, but under any districts, and you're talking about the elected.
Sure.
Elected ones. Out of that group, about fifty percent of the ones that have elected office aren't active anymore, and about fifty percent are. Is that accurate information?
You could be right. I mean, I know that there's three commissioners for every drainage district, and I don't have too much knowledge about the past history of how many are still active versus otherwise.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting the Treasurer's report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. While we got you there, Dan, I have a resolution authorizing the county board chair to cancel the certificate of purchase on a mobile home. Would somebody like to move that? Mr. Kibler, Mr. Langenheim. I'm sorry, I'm looking at Mr. Kibler's sign, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Esri. We'll see if he notices that in a minute. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Treasurer. Our next item is the report from the auditor. Again, these are on the website, and what do you have here?
Yep, it's on the website, got posted earlier in the week. If you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Just wanted to thank you for getting the tolls line to come out of the computer.
Yes, we had to increase the amount of space we had, so it would show a hundred and some million dollars, instead of cutting off the first one.
It's either a sign that the computers are too old, or the budget is too high. Both.
We can, we should debate that over cocktails sometime.
I did notice that we were about where we expected to be on expenditures, two months into the year, we're about sixteen percent of the budget, so.
Yeah, things are moving smoothly.
Any questions or comments for the auditor? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Hartke had a comment.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a motion there. I just, while you guys are both here, I really want to say, I want to thank John and Dan for showing up every time to deliver their reports personally. I want to thank Mr. Northrup for making it here tonight, and Katie being here tonight. I know it's been a source of contention and humor on this board as to whether certain people show up to deliver their reports. I would like to see more public officials showing up and delivering reports to this board. I'd also like to see those people who are up for appointments to show up when they're being appointed, and at least looks in the face and thank us for being here. I think that this, Mr. Carter's spoken about this, Ms. Colward spoke about this, several other people mentioned this, there was conversation earlier. Mr. Northrup mentioned in his opening comments, I think this is important, I don't know what we can do, but I certainly wanted to read that in the record.
I'm sorry, the clerk informs me, I do not have a motion on the floor. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hartke, and your motion, second by Ms. Petrie. All in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
I have one other item for you. Usually, I've been giving to you the purchases not following policy. About forty minutes ago, my senior accountant handed this to me. I have not yet had a chance to review it, I will review it tonight and email it to you. There's about four hundred items on here. You may say, wow, that's amazing. The good news is, it's the nursing home catching up on bills that were, 2012 bills, that they're paying in 2013. So it's not a bad thing, it's actually a good thing, but I'll try to get that out to you tonight. All right?
Feel free to do that via email.
I will. Well, you won't get this, this is actually every one of the vouchers.
Oh, okay.
So you'll get about ten pages to go over.
That'll cost the county a lot of money and post it, if you have to send that to everybody.
No, you'll have a very short email, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a new section of the Finance Report, which is the monthly report on the financials from the nursing home. If you recall, during the study session, we decided this should come to Finance Cal. It's mostly here for everyone's information, there are a lot of numbers there, I don't know how many people are going to dig in, but I want to make sure that it's available for those who want to. Ms. Schwartz.
Just a quick comment, I know that MPA prepares a memo that goes with that, and I think it would be helpful for those people who don't care to dig through all the numbers, just put those five extra pages.
I'll pass that along, Scott indicated he'll put whatever we want in there, so I'll ask him to do that. Yeah, that's the thing that goes to the nursing home board, yeah. Okay. We'll get that put in there. Ms. Petrie.
Just a thank you to Mr. Maxwell for the one-page summary that he sent to all of us pertaining to last night's meeting. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Patsy. I may have a motion to accept the nursing home financials and place them on file. Mr. Hartke, Mr. Carter, any further discussion? Mr. Hartke.
I want to second Patsy's note to Gary, thank you for putting that together. He's leading the way on a couple of important things over there that we want to do. I just wanted to update somebody, since he kind of covered the numbers, I wanted to, just a new policy thing that's going on over the nursing home. We've talked in the past about the respiratory therapy unit that's going in, and it is functioning, and has some great patients, and is already apparently becoming a success, so much so that a Dr. Topolowski from, I believe it's Pravina, has asked, has shown interest in opening up a pulmonary clinic to dovetail right with that, which, again, those two things fit right together. They're going to give us, again, more opportunities to bring these Medicare cases in, the people that are at the hospital that used to stay in the hospital, but now go to nursing homes, and there's where our money is. There may be some capital investment in this, but we're talking about a treadmill, possibly, to get people running, so we're talking about a few grand to possibly get us many, many thousands of dollars of Medicare business. So I wanted to keep you updated on that, and Gary and I are both going to give you guys these regular updates, because at the study session, it was shown that people made it clear that they want more information. Just a reminder, these reports are always online, and you can always read them yourself, so, but we will be delivering them every, at every Cal, and thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell, and again, I stress, I mentioned this in my memo, but this is as much of an opportunity to accept the reports as it is an opportunity to let our representatives on the nursing home board to speak, because, you know, in the past, we haven't heard as much of our representatives as we'd like, so feel free to make your comments known, and feel free to ask questions. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to budget amendments and transfers. Our first budget amendment is related to animal control, is an increased appropriations of five thousand dollars from the fund balance. Ms. Bucy indicated to me that this was essentially an error in the 2013 budget, where this line item was omitted. I may have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Rosales, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That passes. Next budget amendment is number thirteen dash fourteen. This is for the Recorders Automation Fund. This is an increased appropriation of seven hundred dollars. This is to align the budget with the actual unemployment insurance rates, now that we know the contribution level from the state, which we didn't know at budget time. May I have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Mr. Harper, second by Mr. McGuire. Any discussion of this one? Deb would like to correct me.
No, I'm not. I have correction to what's in your packet. Page seventy-four, which is where this budget amendment is. It lists Department as O-one-two arraignment court, that's a mistake, it should not be there, the Department is O-two-three recorder for both lines.
Thank you, Deb. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's approved. Next item is, one second page, next item is second D, one and two, this is for the Children's Advocacy Center. For those who aren't familiar with this organization, they presented to us last year, this is a multi-agency group that works with interviewing abused kids. These are two renewal, grant renewal applications for grants that they've received since 2000, I believe. Make sure I got the year right, both of these have been received since 2000, so they're just seeking to renew these. I would entertain an omnibus motion for second D, one and two. Mr. Jay and Ms. Michaels. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Those will be approved. Similar request from the state's attorney, is also from the Violent Crime Victims Assistant Grant Program from the state's, from the Attorney General's Office, although for a different grant than the CAC. Again, this is a grant that they've received for a number of years, the amount of this grant is twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. I may have a motion to approve, Mr. Esri and Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, or excuse me, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll approve that one. Now we go to the Facilities Director. We have a request from the Facilities Director for a waiver to the hiring freeze for the, a vacancy among the skilled trades workers. I may have a motion to approve this. Mr. Langenheim, third second, Mr. James, is there discussion on this? As you mentioned in the packet, these guys are essentially down to one out of three members on their staff. on their staff, so we can't really wait three months, in my opinion. Ms. Petrie.
An information question of Ms. Bucy. Do you foresee down the line, say mid-budget time, that it would be appropriate for us to have a conversation of trying to fill that third vacancy? Well, it's not a third vacancy, the third person.
That's effectively what you're doing with this request for waiver of hiring freeze. We have one that's already been approved to be filled that we're trying to fill, but this is a third one.
Oh, so this takes care of it. I'm sorry, I lost count. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. That's approved. County Administrator has given us the fiscal year 2013 budget report and budget change report. Not particularly exciting, because we're only two months into the fiscal year, so I would ask for a motion to accept those and place them on file. Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Coward. Is there any discussion or questions for the County Administrator? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the reports, please say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Those are accepted. Now we move to a resolution for the abatement and reduction of taxes heretofore levied for the payment of bonds. May I have a motion for approval? Ms. Coward and Mr. Esri, I saw. Discuss what this is in the packet. This is essentially abating property taxes for bonds that we have, are paying, either have been refinanced at lower rates or that we found other ways to pay for. Are there any questions about this? Is this something that we do every year, but it's a little confusing? So if there are any questions of Ms. Bucy, now's the time. Ms. Schwartz.
So it's my understanding that these are from either the public safety, either the public safety sales tax or others that initially was levied as property tax, but once the public safety sales tax passed, that's been used. My question is, if in the future we would like to, let's say, build a jail or anything else, we would like to use money, do we then simply abate less? Or are we actually committed to the full abatement?
All of these bonds are alternate revenue source bonds, which means that the time they were issued, the county pledged the alternate revenue source, which is public safety sales tax. And some of these, there are a couple of them that are other sources, like the IMRF early retirement and the highway bonds. So they're still general obligation bonds, so ultimately, the bond documents indicate that they're ultimately backed by property tax. But the real revenue source is the public safety sales tax, and to answer your question. So no, I don't think you could minimize, minimize the amount that you're paying these bonds from public safety sales tax and increase the property tax in order to do it. The backing is basically just an emergency. If for some reason we did not receive enough public safety sales tax in a given year to make the bond payments for some huge economic recession or something, then the property tax would back it.
Ms. Michaels.
I think for some reason, too, in the back of my brain, that some of these will be coming off in the next couple of years. Do we have something that'll mature or be paid off in full, like in two, three years or something?
No, actually, the original jail bonds from the 1995 satellite jail were paid off two years ago. The IMRF ERI obligation, but that has nothing to do with public safety. That one does come off next year, yes.
Thank you.
2018, when's the next? I was looking at this the other day. I can't remember when the next round of bonds matures.
Oh, I don't know.
There's a schedule in the budget that lists them all.
In the year 2018, the debt service from public safety does drop at that point, and through to the end of those bonds, 2029, it drops by about a million dollars a year.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. Are there additional comments or questions? If not, may I have, or sorry, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, no. That is approved. Next item is, again, something we've been doing every year lately. This is a request to borrow from the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund to, $1.5 million, to tide over the General Corporate Fund until we start getting property tax money in the summer. May I have a motion for approval? Mr. Jay in a second. Mr. James. Is there additional discussion? Again, the timing here is that the General Corporate Fund is, spends money all year, but only gets money in property tax, during, as part of the property tax cycle, whereas the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund gets money all year and spends it at the end of the year. So this is essentially a way of juggling the money to allow the General Corporate Fund to meet its obligations. We have done this, how many years in a row have we been doing this? And again, the person who can best discuss this is probably the Treasurer. If anybody has questions for him, he's sitting right there. So any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. We'll do it again. Next, we have the, this is the money half of the results of the Job Content Evaluation Committee for Ms. Blakeman. I think we pretty much answered all our questions on this earlier under policy. Would somebody like to make a motion for approval? Mr. Mitchell, and second by Ms. Michaels. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. Going once. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. That is approved. And now to the main event, the nursing home loan. We talked about this during the nursing home study session. For those of you who were there, essentially, and I'll try to say this as neutrally as possible, the total outstanding balance of loans that the nursing home was given with the anticipation of repayment stands at about $333,000. And since that, since that became the loan balance, the nursing home assumed responsibility from the General Fund for the debt service on the $4 million supplemental construction bond, which is an amount equivalent to about $307,000 a year. So the argument in favor of, I would ask for a motion to approve declaring this paid. Actually, Deb, how do you want to do this? Is this sort of an A or B? Do you want a motion for option A?
Whichever option you want.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to declare the loan paid, and then we'll talk about it. Mr. Harkey and Ms. Schwartz, that'll be option B. The two options we have are, we can, we either need to renew the loan for another year, because we're, it's essentially, it's over its legal term at this point, or we need to write it off. The argument in favor of writing it off is that the nursing home has essentially already paid it, they just paid it a different way, by taking over this debt service. The argument in favor of not writing it off and renewing it is that you don't buy the argument for writing it off. I am in favor of writing it off. I will now open the floor for discussions. Well, okay, I was expecting that to take an hour. All those in favor of forwarding option B to the full board with a recommendation for approval, which is declaring that the loan is essentially paid? Am I using the right terminology? Which will be, for which a budget amendment will be brought to the full board at the upcoming meeting? Okay, so if we vote yes, we'll get a budget amendment. If we vote no, we will, I'll ask for a motion to renew it. Yeah, Harkey and Schwartz. All those in favor of declaring the loan paid, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Okay, show of hands, paid. I declare that a pass. I have a brief Chair's Report, just to let you know, a couple of things that we decided, we're contemplating for the agenda this month and decided it was likely to be a long meeting. We could put them off till next month. One of them, Deb and I have been talking about potentially eliminating the hiring, rescinding the hiring freeze. I make a discussion of this in the, in my brief discussion in my memo, and again, we'll have a lot more for that next month, so I just wanted to let you know it's coming. And then the other one is, we're talking about maybe whether we ought to look at adjusting the fiscal year to be the calendar year instead of December 1. There's, again, a number of reasons for and against, and I'm not going to go into them now, but we'll get a memo on that for next month. Items for consent are everything except G6, and that concludes Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. Overworked today. Overworked today. We'll now move on to Justice and Social Services. Ms. Berksen, do you want to come up here, or do you want to do it from your seat?
I think from the seat.
Go right ahead.
There's very little to it.
You have my permission.
I tried to download all these reports, incidentally, and the connection timed out before I could download every one of them, so I haven't seen them. So anyway, would anyone like to move that we accept these reports? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have a clarification question. Assuming that there will be an approval vote for the EMA moving under the sheriff, is this going to preclude any further reports from the EMA as we have been having on a monthly basis?
I do not think it will.
Okay, thank you.
They have a website, so we can go and get it, except I couldn't download this for anything. Any one of these.
I'd like to request that we inform the sheriff on that, so that we can get those reports. Ms. Petrie, be happy to do that if, let's inform that. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, I mean, I hope the sheriff can be here next at the full board meeting to talk about how EMA fits into the structure, because I think there were some good questions raised tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. And if I could, if I could also add the coordinator, too, come with the sheriff. We don't have one yet? I thought he had one.
You could request the interim coordinator to come with the sheriff. I will request that, yes.
Yes, that would be the one I'd want.
Okay, and the only, other thing Chair's report. The sheriff has just sent the same statement that he's sent to everyone. The drone was bought in 2008. It didn't work right. It flew briefly in a park west of St. Joe. It took some pictures of the roof here, and then it crashed, and it's never worked since. And I believe it's available, you can see it in one of the hobby shops. But whatever these other drones that are appearing are, they're not government drones, but they're available on the internet and at hobby shops. There are a lot of drones around.
I don't understand the definition of the drone. You know, we have HobbyCo and Horizon, the two largest distributors in the world in Champaign-Urbana, and I used to work for Horizon, and they're selling a heck of a lot of drones in the area, so I don't know. I don't mean to be funny, because I think this is serious, these people that are coming, because they're concerned about what's happening in their neighborhoods, but there's just a lot of people flying these hobby planes in the area, and helicopters. But I don't know if that's the issue, and we don't have control over it in the city of Champaign-Urbana, so.
Well, before talking drones, I want to mention one of my farm neighbors, whose wife was in the combine this fall, mentioned that she saw a drone, not a big one, but when she was in the combine, saw, it's like Mr. McGuire says, it used to be called radio control, airplanes or helicopters. And I.
But now they have cameras, and they, they can stalk people.
Yeah, so I don't know what's going on out there.
They can do what she was claiming was being done to her.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't deny it, but there's something going on where we got a bunch of them flying around here, and who owns them?
Individuals, private individuals. It's a hobby, it's a game. I don't think so. That's it?
Now that we've answered the drone problem, is there no other business that I know of, that we call for adjournment? So move, second, all in favor, we're adjourned.